Town meeting members, please take your seats. Before we get started, are there any members who have not been sworn in? Great. So, tonight, the first thing we'll do is let's all stand in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Jeff Moses and Joyce Rodenhizer have agreed to be tellers for this evening, so would you please come up and get sworn in?
Do swear faithfully and impartially performing your duties as tellers for tonight's town meeting to the best of your abilities. Thank you.
And Assistant Town Clerk Danielle Bentley will now call the roll. Batolo? Chicalini? Connors? Costin?
I just spoke, I thought you said Costin before, and it was Carlson.
Yes.
I still said President.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Cotum D. Cotum J. Cox? Deckeru? Devlin? Donardo? Dockery? Dougherty? Fallaska? Finn? Fowler? Goodwin? Gruck? Guarino? Johnson? Jones? Lucy? Excuse me. Long? Maltese? Minugian? McCarthy? McLaughlin? Mareschi? Moses? Pelzinski? Palini? Politano? Parechio? Quinlan? Rando? Ring? Rodenhizer? Rosetti? Spencer? Stewitt? Sweezy? Traverse? Vecchio? Witten? So, with 49 members present and one absent, a quorum is met. The first order of business this evening will be to elect a moderator, and at this time, I'm going to ask Town Council John Vasipoli to address you and outline the process by which the election will take place.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Under the provisions of Mass. General Law's Chapter 39, Section 14, the town clerk shall preside over the town meeting until such time as a moderator is elected. The election of the moderator shall be by majority vote of the town meeting members present and voting. The election of the moderator shall be conducted by the town clerk in the following manner: The clerk will first accept nominations for the town moderator from the floor. Each nomination shall be seconded by another town meeting member. At the conclusion of the nominations, the town meeting should vote to close the nominations. The town clerk will then call the roll, and each town meeting member may cast his vote for moderator. The candidate that obtains a majority of the votes from town meeting members present and voting shall be elected moderator. In the event that none of the candidates nominated obtains a majority of the votes, the town clerk will conduct another ballot by roll-call vote and continue with successive ballots until such time as one of the candidates obtains the necessary majority vote. In the event the town meeting wishes to conduct the election of the moderator in a manner other than which has just been outlined, the town meeting may vote by a majority vote to do so. For example, in the past, town meetings have voted to elect the moderator by secret ballot. Prior town meetings have also voted to change the number of votes necessary to elect the moderator to the majority of those present in voting plus one. In addition, town meeting in the past has voted to allow those persons nominating a candidate for town moderator to give a three-minute speech in support of said candidate and to allow each candidate an opportunity to address the town meeting members on their qualifications for being elected moderator. Please note that under Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 39, Section 15, town meeting members shall not use a secret ballot when voting on any motion unless there is a two-thirds vote of town meeting members present in voting thereon that a secret ballot be used. Does anyone have any questions about the process for the election of the moderator? Thank you.
At this time, I'll entertain any motions regarding the process to elect a moderator.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Town Council, ladies and gentlemen, consistent with past practice, I offer the following motion: That the Saugus Town Meeting will use the following process to elect a town moderator for the 2013-2015 term. One, nominations may be made by any member; no second would be necessary. Two, a person can nominate himself or herself. Three, a nominee may decline a nomination. Four, a motion to close nominations will require a second. If there's more than one candidate nominated, the Australian secret ballot will be used. The candidate who receives a majority plus one of those present in voting will be declared the winner. If there is only one candidate, a vote will be taken by a call of the yays and nays unless objected to by any single member; in which event, the Australian ballot will be used. Thank you.
Can I have a second on Mr. Minugian's? Are there any further nominations? I mean, motions, I'm sorry, regarding the process at this time? Seeing none, can we have a vote on Mr. Minugian's motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion passes by unanimous voice vote. I'd like to now open up the floor for nominations of moderator.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Minugian?
I'd like to move to nominate Stephen Dougherty, Precinct 4, as Town Moderator for the 2013-2015 term for the Saugus Town Meeting.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations? Seeing no further nominations, can I have a motion to close nominations at this time? All those in favor of Mr. Dougherty as moderator, please do so by saying aye. Any opposed? Mr. Dougherty, you are elected as moderator for the town meeting.
Mr. Moderator, congratulations. And to my fellow town meeting members, congratulations on returning while being elected to your seat in the town meeting. In light of the fact that our colleague from Precinct 10 has devoted, has been devoted to the work of moderator for 18 years, learning Robert's Rules, attending FinCon meetings, answering numerous phone calls, delivering budget books, and a host of other things, helping get, helping new members get adjusted as well, I wonder if our former town moderator would like to say a few words.
The clock's ticking now, keep it to three minutes.
Mrs. Rodenhizer, thank you for the surprise. And I want to thank all of you, those who've been past members and present members, that it's been a real privilege to serve you, the town meeting, and it's something that does not come along in an individual's lifetime for most people. And having grown up in this town and having followed government most of my life, it's, I consider it to be a rare privilege to have been your moderator for all these years, and I just really sincerely want to thank all of you, and that's, and wish our new town moderator good luck, and any way I can possibly be of help, I'd be glad to at any time.
Appreciate that.
So, I guess we'll remain standing. The former moderator reminded me that I forgot to swear in our new moderator, so raise your right hand. Do you swear to faithfully and impartially perform your duties as the moderator for the town meeting for the town of Saugus to the best of your abilities?
I do.
Thank you, congratulations.
First off, I'd like to thank my fellow town meeting members for that vote of confidence, and I see my job going forward as proving to you that that confidence wasn't misplaced. I have a huge pair of shoes to fill here, as our previous town moderator is surely a tough act to follow, and I have no doubt that there's going to be a learning curve as we go forward, and I, in advance, I thank you for your patience as we navigate through it together. On the table in front of you, you'll see a couple of items that the town clerk put out. There's a guide to town meeting for some of our newer members, I know we have quite a few of them who are here this evening. There's also a list of all of the current town meeting members, along with their address and phone number, and there's also a name tag there, which the town clerk came up with that idea, and I agree, great idea for tonight, because we have so many new faces, so the veterans can learn who the new people are and vice versa. If you wouldn't mind wearing that, that'd be great. Okay, one second. We have up here available a couple of copies of the town bylaws and the town charter. She did, the town clerk didn't print up 50 copies of it, because we didn't want to kill that many trees, but, and it is available online, both of them are available from the town website, they should be on that paper that's in front of you, the link to it. But again, if someone doesn't have internet access, we do have a couple of copies for you. Just a couple of quick things on our, we've had a longstanding policy with the town meeting on electronic devices, that electronic devices should be shut off and shouldn't be used during the meeting. And my spin on that is a little different. I would ask you to silence any phones or devices you have, so we're not listening to trips and twings and that sort of thing, interrupting the meeting. The expectation, I know a lot of people like to use digital media, I have a stack of papers up here in front of me that includes, you know, the town bylaws and the town charter and Robert's Rules of Order, and it's somewhat bulky, but I also have all of that same information plus 100 other documents and a couple of past year's budgets and everything right on my cellphone if I need it. I'm not opposed to the use of electronic devices for business purposes. I mean, basically, the people who elected you to be here have an expectation that you're going to be utilizing the time that's spent here, focusing on the matters that are before us for consideration. Keep in mind that there's, in addition to the camera up here behind me, there are three of them located in the back of the room, and if you've ever watched one of these meetings on TV, you see that they shoot these from a variety of angles, so if you are using an electronic device and you're texting with someone, or you're, you know, playing Words with Friends, or watching the hockey game, you're not doing that with any sense of privacy. You also have reporters and citizens sitting behind you in the gallery, so, again, the use of electronic devices, as long as they're in silent mode and for business purposes, you know, to follow along and open and read documents pertaining to what we're dealing with, is acceptable. Again, we just ask you to keep them silent if you would. Okay, there's going to be a training session for our new town meeting members, and actually, any of the senior town meeting members who would like to attend it can also. That's going to be coming up, watch your email, the town clerk will be sending out a notice on that sometime in the next couple of weeks. And I just want to read for you where we're entering into a new year here, a new session, our Town Meeting Code of Conduct. Just to quickly review, this was adopted in 1973 at our annual town meeting, and it basically states that "Any person who is employed in any capacity, example attorney, architect, broker, etc., by another interested in an article under discussion should disclose his or her employment and relationship before speaking. Any person who has a financial interest in an article under discussion should disclose his or her financial interest before speaking thereon. Any person who is the spouse, parent, child, brother or sister of a person who has a financial interest in the article under discussion should disclose such relationship before speaking thereon. Any town meeting member who is referred to in the above paragraphs 1, 2, or 3 should consider a voluntary abstention from voting on the article in question. Notification of the abstention should be, when possible, given to the moderator in writing before the session in which the article is considered, but at least before debate on the article. However, this does not prohibit the member from voting if he or she feels that their objectivity is not compromised. Any town meeting member moving reconsideration must have voted on the prevailing side and must so affirm for the motion in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order." And finally, "Town meeting members should strive to allow all persons who can illuminate the issue at hand the opportunity to speak before moving the previous question." That done, we're going to move into our warrant for this evening. Before we actually get into Article 1, we have one other item up before us, and this is, this was voted, it was Article 26, voted at town meeting on June 11th of 2012, and it pertains to our audit committee. And I'll read this here to you quickly. The town meeting, Section 517, "Town meeting will appoint an audit committee that shall consist of five town meeting members elected by a majority vote of the town meeting for the duration of the town meeting term elected at the first meeting following an election," which would be this one. "Vacancy shall be filled in the manner of original selection." Section 1, "Purpose: To increase public confidence and trust in the financial operations of town government; to instill accountability, integrity, and efficiency in the financial operations of the town of Saugus; to support town government efforts to comply with those laws and regulations by which the town is governed." Section 2, "Functions: The audit committee will analyze and evaluate selected appropriations made by town meeting as determined by the committee or upon recommendation of the town meeting or on petition by any 10 members. Review financial statements or transactions of the town financial offices. Review annual financial statements of the town financial offices and the independent auditor's financial statements. Review the efficacy of internal fiscal controls and encourage corrective action of those controls or accounting issues identified in the independent auditor's management letter. Identify opportunities for cost and efficiency improvements. Be non-budgeted and obtain essential copying and reproduction needs from the town manager or his or her designee. Orient new members and encourage continued education of its members. Utilize the accountants, town accountants, I'm sorry, as the liaison for information that the committee needs to do its review and study work. Issue at least one written annual report at least 48 hours prior to the commencement of the annual town meeting. Said report shall also be posted on the town's website. Ensure that financial statements or transactions under consideration by the committee shall be analyzed and audited by committee members, not party to those transactions or financial statements." And finally, Section 3, "Qualifications: Professional training and/or experience in accounting, finance law, or general management is desired. No member of any board, commission, or other committee of the town, whether elected or appointed, shall be a member of the audit committee, and members shall be familiar with and maintain a familiarity with relevant state laws, regulations, and pending legislation that may impact the town." So, that's going to be the first item before us this evening, is the election of the audit committee. And with that said, at this time, I would entertain any nominations for members to that committee? Mr. Minugian?
Mr. Moderator, I would move to nominate the following five members to be the first audit committee, and I'd like to speak on the nominations, if I may. Sean Maltese, Precinct 6. Stephanie Parechio, Precinct 2. Christine Mareschi, Precinct 2. Michael Palini, Precinct 7. And Katie Marie Guarino, Precinct 10. Mr. Moderator, I offer these nominations because I believe they are consistent with the qualifications. None of these individuals hold another town office. Many of them, I believe all of them, have some level of experience and/or training in areas of finance, and they are, four of them are new town meeting members, and I think back to 50 years ago next week, when we, a watershed event happened in this country when we lost a president, and that president asked all of us that we could do more. And I know it's a lot to ask a new group of people to do it, but I think that a fledgling group of this can bring fresh perspectives and enthusiasm, and certainly, members of the town meeting and the administration will, will work to get them up to speed, and as town meeting often does, we don't expect the sun, the moon, the stars, the first crack, but it's a beginning. And so, I offer that in that spirit, Mr. Moderator, and I hope there's a second and adoption. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, those five names have been placed in the nomination and seconded. Do we have any additional nominations for the audit committee? Yes?
Yeah, Chris Palini, who's been in my first meeting, still trying to get away with the land, see how things work. Appreciate the nomination here, I'd just like to take my name off of this as a decline nomination.
As your option, thank you. That being said, at this time, we have four nomi, four names in nomination for the audit committee. Do I hear a fifth? Somewhat of a predicament, we are, by the article that was passed, we are required, at the first meeting following the, the election process, which would be this meeting, to appoint an audit committee that shall consist of five members. What we didn't have, what we don't have in that article is a contingency or a method to appoint someone beyond the nominating process.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to add, I'll offer the name of Patricia McLaughlin from Precinct 4. She, she works at the Department of Revenue, and she has experience in auditing, and I know she might want to clear that with her superiors, but at this time, I'd like to offer her name as a replacement for Michael Palini.
Thank you. Do we have a second for Ms. McLaughlin? Seconded? So, we're back to five names. Yes?
Christine Mareschi, I am also personally, I'm also a candidate.
We, okay, Christine Mareschi, thank you, Christine has pulled her name out of, out of consideration for the audit committee, which puts us back at four. So, again, the predicament, we don't have a, a process in place other than nominations from the floor to fill this committee at this time, so I would entertain any nominations, and again, you can nominate yourself for the fifth position.
I'm nominated, Rick?
I'm sorry? Rick Smith? Has been nominated. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a bunch of them. All right, so we're back to five names. Are there any other nominations at this time? I'm sorry, your name? Rick. Thank you. Rick Smith is declined. Okay. Do we have any other nominations for the audit committee? And again, you can nominate yourself.
Speaking of nominations, Mr.?
Certainly, please approach.
Mr. Moderator, fellow town meeting members, seeing some hesitance here amongst a lot of us here, I think this has been coming up, we know, known it's been passed for a while, but we're just not familiarized with enough of the people that are here. Maybe we should take a, a little bit of time, and after the meeting, to introduce everybody over the next week or two, maybe we can gel together some people to go on the committee that would truly like to serve. Maybe, just a consideration, maybe we want to postpone this for a week or two.
Well, for a week or two, or to the next meeting. Our next meeting would be expected in May, I believe, right? Unless something should come up for a special meeting before then. Town Council, if you will? Something the town council just pointed out is, we, while it does call for the election, there is nothing in the amendment that, that calls for us having the ability to postpone this till a later time. There's also nothing in the amendment, nothing in the article that prohibits us from electing the four members who are willing at this time, and putting off the selection of a fifth member until such time as, as someone steps up and is interested, which would presumably be at our next meeting, either in the beginning of May or the next special meeting that's called. But since that's not included in here, if somebody would want to put that in the form of a motion that we, that we accept the four nominees and leave the fifth space open until such time as someone steps up at a future meeting to fill it, we could entertain that motion at this time. So moved? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to accept the four nominees presented by Mr. Minugian, who have, who have agreed to be nominated, and to leave the fifth spot in the audit committee open until the next regular or special meeting, at which time it'll come back before us for, for nominations. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Could you read back the names, Madam Secretary?
I'm so confused now. Sean Maltese. Stephanie Parechio. Michael Palini.
Michael Palini declined.
He declined, okay. No. Katie Guarino. And Patricia McLaughlin.
Okay, moving forward, Article 2, that is between us tonight, I mean, before us tonight, Mr. Maltese, as a courtesy to the Chief of Police, moves Article 2 for consideration. I have been informed by town council, in fact, we have a letter here telling us that Article 2 requests the town adopt a bylaw for the appointment of special police officers. Section 4 and 11 of the proposed bylaw authorize the Chief of Police to appoint and remove special police officers. and remove special police officers. These provisions are in contradiction to the town charter under Article Two, Section Thirteen C, under which the town manager is the sole appointing authority for police officers. And as you may be aware, or should be aware, we are not able to adopt a bylaw that is in conflict with the town charter. And the chief of police, as my understanding, has asked that this be referred back to him to be reworked, reworded, and come before us at a later time. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to refer this article back to the maker.
No.
We have a second?
Aye.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article Two is referred back to the chief of police. Article Three. I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry, forgive me, I, yes. Oversight on my part. Reports of committees. I'm sorry, starting with our finance committee. This is that learning curve I was talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and congratulations, I think. And I also want to thank former moderator for his eighteen years of exemplary service to the town. We've had a lot of interesting meetings and conversations, and I've enjoyed it immensely. Thank you, Robert. I'd also like to congratulate the new members, including the members of the Board of Selectmen as well. Look forward to working with all of you. One of the, one of the things that I would ask is that, as many people as can attend the meetings, especially the new members, because you're going to be getting a tutorial anyway, but, so this is sort of probably difficult for you folks to understand all of the things that'll be going on this evening, but that's just the way it is, I guess. The, as far as the financial articles go, these are mostly because of the fact we have to set a tax rate, and manager needs to get in as much information to the Department of Revenue as possible, so that things don't creep in afterwards that should have been addressed before the setting of the tax rate. So therefore, we have these meetings, these recommendations to the town. And I don't believe there's anything that's going to be overburdening, but a couple of them did raise some questions in the, in the finance committee. And we had asked for some more detail to be available tonight, so I'm not sure if that was provided or not. But one of them is where to get the one hundred and seventy-four thousand for funding salaries and expenditures for the public works department based on the Collins Report. And as the manager explained to us, there's a debt fee that is not required this year. It will be required next year, so he wants to take that money to fund the recommendations of the Collins Report. The other question was about establishment of a targeted stabilization fund for capital Of course, the finance committee never declines additional funds for the stabilization. The only difference is this is actually targeted, and finance committee did approve the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars being placed in that. The, I believe it's Article Eleven, probably created the most discussions, so, because I didn't understand it, it was the first time I had ever seen anything like this. I requested that the assessor, Ron Cohane, attend the meeting the other night, which he did, and very appreciative of it, Ron. He came in from his vacation to attend the meeting, and he's here tonight in case anyone has any questions. But it's pretty much taking an overlay surplus and pushing, putting it against a overlay deficit in two thousand and nine. So aside from that, I think everything's pretty well spelled out. And again, I want to say thank you to all the new members and look forward to seeing you at finance committee meetings. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Town meeting members should have gotten a copy of the finance committee report by email earlier this week, but there are some copies up here at the secretary's desk. If anybody needs one, come on up and please grab one. Do we have any other reports of committees? Okay, hearing none, we'll move forward. We do have some handouts here to come around also.
Would the tellers assist me in passing out some handouts?
Town meeting members should have received these also by email, but if you didn't, you'll have a copy in front of you. Okay, while we, while we finish distributing those, we'll move on here. As a courtesy to the finance committee, Mr. Maltese moves Article Three for consideration. Article Three reads, "To see if the town will vote to amend the town of Saugus bylaws by inserting the following under Section Six Oh Three Fire Regulations. Section Six, Fire Alarm System Regulations. Four, Alarm System Regulations. Subsection F. Private fire alarm systems may be connected to the Saugus Fire Department Municipal Radio Box Fire Alarm System after obtaining written permission from the Inspector of Wires and the Saugus Fire Chief. Detailed plans of the private fire alarm system must be submitted to the Saugus Fire Chief and must be approved by the chief or his or her designee. The fee for the direct connection to the Saugus Fire Department Municipal Radio Box Fire Alarm System shall be two hundred dollars per year, or part thereof, prorated monthly. Thereafter payable on or before July first of each year, or upon installation in the middle of a calendar year. Fee shall be payable to the town of Saugus, treasurer, collector. Proposed by the fire chief and recommendation of the finance committee is to recommend Article Three." I see that, would the chief like to come up and speak on this or add any illumination? Do we have a second? I'm sorry? Seconded, thank you. How you doing? Good. If you would, just state your name and position for the members and...
Sure. My name is Michael Newberry. I'm happy to say I now reside at Eight Gilway here in Saugus after seven years in Lynn. But I serve at your pleasure as the deputy fire chief here in town. The reason I came up is I've been intimately involved in this process for the past eighteen months. I'd like to say congratulations to all the new members here, Mr. Moderator, members of the town government. It's my pleasure to be here. I sent everyone a letter ahead of time, and then when the elections happened, I hit the seventeen new people. The antiquated municipal fire alarm system was a system of hardwired fire alarms throughout the town. Hundred and thirty-three businesses were on that system. They paid three hundred and twenty-five dollars per year to a private company to maintain that fire alarm system. In two thousand and five, Chief Blanchard made a recommendation, it was voted on here May first, two thousand and six, at the town meeting, to adopt a bylaw to take a bond to pay for the system. The switchover cost each business owner a certain amount of money, so what we did was we pushed the fee off and gave them sort of a moratorium period until now, where the system is now costing the town money. So a lot of these businesses have been getting fire protection through the town for seven years for free. So the intent of this system was to be self-sufficient, a system where the town wouldn't have to pay money to maintain it, and give these people a break. I think the industry standard for, you know, an ADT-type system is thirty-five dollars a month, so we figured a two hundred dollar fee would be less than half what they'd pay, you know, if they went through an ADT system or the like. The private company that was collecting the fee stopped collecting the fee in about two thousand and eleven, and since then, it's cost the town fifteen thousand dollars in repairs to the antiquated system. It's cost the town, I believe, five to six thousand dollars per box on fifteen town-owned buildings, so I believe that was approximately sixty thousand dollars I sent in the letter. And also, it costs five thousand dollars to remove some wire for infrastructure upgrades for Verizon and National Grid. That'll be another issue that keeps coming up for the town. So the fee, we feel, is though is fair enough. The industry standard for these municipal systems run between two fifty and six hundred dollars per year for other towns. So we thought we'd come below that, but offer the best service for a lower price. And the fire chief does have rights to institute fees, but you can't just grab a number. Once that fee's over fifty dollars, it needs the support of the town government. So I hope you support us. It's an important issue to maintain that system. The dispatch center itself has two receivers in it. Each of those receivers, because you need redundancy by NFPA standards, cost twenty-seven thousand dollars to replace. Each of those systems are now showing wear and tear. We need money to maintain these things. It's a thousand dollars a year for paper, the printer breaks, we're getting antennas leaning over because of the freeze star cycle, batteries are dying. The system itself has little gadgets inside of it like a computer, and you know how long a laptop lasts, barely ever. So I hope you'll consider voting for this article. Thank you.
Do we have any questions for the deputy chief? Again, anyone coming forward, just for the benefit of our new members, if you would introduce yourself and...
Darren Ring, Precinct Ten. Just a quick question. Is this per box, so if you have a company that has four different radio boxes, is it two hundred per box?
That's a good question. The, the way we figured we'd bill this, say Square One Mall has two boxes because of the volume of their fire alarm system, we figured we'd bill them two hundred dollars for that one facility, just to ring through. We didn't think it was fair to beat these people up. York Ford has two boxes, and I believe other places do have several boxes, but it would be two hundred dollars per business or the like.
Any other questions? Thank you, deputy chief.
Just speaking on this, as one of the businesses affected, two hundred dollars is pretty cheap. The maintenance cost for the burglar alarm system at my office is three hundred and twenty-five a year. On the house system, it's over two hundred dollars. So two hundred dollars for a fire alarm system is relatively inexpensive, and I think we should support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the question. By voice vote, all in favor of the finance committee's recommendation to vote favorably on Article Three. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Hearing none, motion passes. As a courtesy to the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Maltese moves Article Four for consideration. Article Four reads, "Conduct, to see if the town will amend the town bylaws by adding the following under Section Three Hundred. Conduct of elected officials and municipal employees. One, elected officials and municipal employees as defined in Mass. General Law's Chapter Two Sixty-eight A, Section One, shall not participate as such an employee in a particular matter in which, to his knowledge, he, his immediate family, or partner, a business organization in which he is serving as officer-director, trustee, partner, or employee, or any person or organization with whom he is negotiating or has any arrangement concerning prospective employment, has a financial interest. Elected officials and municipal employees as defined in Mass. General Law, Chapter Twenty Two Sixty-eight A, Section One, shall not, as such an employee, solicit business, gifts, or any financial compensation from individuals or businesses, entities, that are business entities, I'm sorry, that appear before them or that may require from them any permit, license, approval, or recommendation." If the tellers could assist. First of all, do we have a second on the motion? Motion is seconded. At this time, I have an amendment offered in writing by Mr. Minugian, and passing out copies of it to you. This states, "The amended Article Four of the November eighteenth Saugus Special Town Meeting warrant by adding a new Section Three that will read as follows. What we just read plus Section Three, elected officials and municipal employees as defined in Mass. General Law, Chapter Two Sixty-eight A, Section One, shall not, as such an employee, accept business, gifts, or any financial compensation of substantial value as designed by CMR nine oh three point oh five, which is fifty dollars or more, in any three hundred sixty-five day period from individuals or business entities that appear before them or that may require from them any permit, license, approval, or recommendation." Mr. Minugian, would you like to speak on the amendment?
Second.
I'm sorry, seconded.
Mr. Moderator, I was approached by a former town meeting member, Ed Bozell, from Precinct Nine, that asked if the word "accept" would be added. And I thought, rather than add it into Number Two, I would put it as a separate section, and this restates what is in the state law. And as we know, this would allow for citizens at the local level to initiate proceedings under the enforcement provisions of our bylaw. So what this does is it essentially restates what is in the CMR, and it, there is additional language that's not here, but it's part of the conduct test that municipal employees must take. For example, although it says fifty dollars, even if an employee accepts a gift certificate for twenty-five dollars, they still must disclose that with the town clerk in writing. So this adds, but the first, the second section talks about solicitation. This speaks to accepting without a solicitation. So if there's an aggregate, say, they go out, if elected officials go out to, are treated at a restaurant or something like that, and they accept more than fifty dollars' worth of drinks and food in any one year, then that would be a violation, and we'd be saying so in our bylaw, and citizens could enforce it at the bylaw at the local level. Currently, the only option available to citizens is to call a state agency and wait for response. I think this, this is a sunshine law, and it would allow citizens to... I think this is a sunshine law, and it would allow citizens to put their name on the piece of paper when they're coming forward and issuing a complaint about public conduct. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Minugian?
I've had this question with town council, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that like all of our bylaws, this would, there would be criminal penalties attached, and an individual could swear out a complaint, just as any other bylaw would be the case. And if I would ask the town council to affirm or correct me if I'm wrong, he's, so citizens could go to the court and swear out a complaint on the first two sections, which were offered by the previous Board of Selectmen, as well as the third one.
Do you want to have him come up here? For anyone who didn't hear, the question to the town council is the, how the penalty would be spelled out on this.
Section one-oh-two of the town bylaws provides criminal penalties for violation of any town bylaw, numerous town bylaws, obviously. The penalty is three hundred dollars per offense, and as the previous speaker had stated, it's a criminal violation. Somebody could request a criminal complaint out of Lynn District Court for violating any of our town bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on the motion, on the amendment? If you would, just step up to the microphone. Sure. If you could introduce yourself, and then that way everybody could...
Yes, Ronald Witten, Precinct One. This is just going over with the municipal employees how to sign a, and take a code of ethics test. This is state law. It seems to me that this is a little bit redundant, and also, the penalties for most of the town bylaws are fifty dollars, all right? They can be three hundred dollars if it's amended that way, but it's fifty dollars for most time bylaws. And to make it a criminal action, I just can't see it. I would move that we postpone that article indefinitely, and I would so move.
Yes, Mr. Long. If you could clarify your request. Yes. One second. Town council, if I can... All right. We're going to vote first on the referral. Yes, the referral was seconded. So on the refer, what we're voting on here is to refer this back to the town council, I mean, the Board of Selectmen, I'm sorry. Discussion on the referral? Any discussion, period, on the motion? Mr. Cox? Certainly. Valid point. What we have before us is not the main motion, but Mr. Minugian's proposed amendment to the motion. So what we should do procedurally is vote first on the amendment, and then on the motion as amended or not amended, depending on how that vote comes out. So on the, is there any discussion on the amendment to the motion as proposed? Yes. No, because you're not talking about referring the amendment, you're talking about referring the main motion. But the amendment is what's before us, is the question that's before us at this time. So on the, any discussion on the amendment? Okay, yes.
Arthur Grabowski, sixty-six Denver Street. I have some serious reservations about this amendment. Just not long ago, you folks passed a bylaw about graffiti, and there was a lot of discussion then about criminal violation or civil violation. I believe, in your wisdom, you decided to make it a civil violation. I think we're going down a slippery slope here to have some accusations made against somebody that they would have to go to court to defend and making it a criminal violation as opposed to a civil violation. I also think that there is a mechanism in the State Ethics Commission, they can sanction people, they can fine people, they can write letters of reprimand, or they can actually say, you know, you broke the law, don't do it again. They have that ability, and we shouldn't, as a board, as a committee, or as a town meeting, take that law that they have to work with and take it away from them and put it in the hands of some person going down to court and swearing out a complaint, and making it a criminal violation that somebody has to go and defend themselves on. I believe that the Ethics Commission has a vehicle to do that, and I would hope that you would take up the indefinitely postponement or refer back, and it needs a lot more discussion when you're talking about making somebody subject to a criminal complaint. That's very serious, and I think we ought to have more discussion and contemplation on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Yes.
Jeff Moses, Precinct Nine. Congratulations, Mr. Moderator. Thank you. The concern I have is, as both a town meeting member and also a town employee, in the event of working on a fundraising project, are we also governed by the same type of thing, where we can't accept any funds or stuff like this for the fundraiser? Would that also come under this, these guidelines? That could really, for instance, the fire department runs a golf tournament every year, and we solicit, you know, business in town, so gifts and donations or whatnot, and how would that impact something like that that we do?
My interpretation on this is that it's aimed at the individual and not at associations, but I would defer to the town council for... Yes. So no, it wouldn't affect a firefighter's organization who's raising funds, it would be more an individual who's profiting or benefiting, I believe. Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to call for the question on the amendment, and what we're voting here, a yea vote will accept the, I'm sorry, we're going to do a roll call vote, a yes vote during the roll call will accept, will amend the motion, as Mr. Minugian stated, adding in the last paragraph about accepting gifts, financial compensation, et cetera, after which time we will vote on the motion itself, whether to refer it and then, or if not to indefinitely postpone it. So if the clerk will call a roll?
Out of Ada? Bartolo? Billingsley? Brown? Cardinale? Carlson? Ciccolini? Connors? Costin? Cottum D? Cottum J? Cox? Deckero? Devlin? Dinardo? Dockery? Doherty? Pulaski? Finn? Fowler? Goodwin? Grok? Guarino? Johnson? Jones? Lucy? Long? Lo Presti? Maltese? Minugian? McCarthy? McLaughlin? Mareschi? Moses? Palzinski? Payalini? Politano? Paracchio? Quinlan? Rando? Ring? Rodenheiser? Rosetti? Smith? Spencer? Stewart? Sweetsie? Travers? Vecchio? Witten?
Forty-one noes, seven yays.
Forty-one noes, seven yays, so the amendment has been defeated. Now we move on to the article itself. We have a motion to refer it back to the maker, which in this case would be the Board of Selectmen. Is there any discussion on the motion? Yes. Mr. Long.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I support the referral on this article. As we all know, we've recently had an election, we all know that the Board has changed, Board of Selectmen's changed considerably, but there's another reason that I have for supporting the referral. Actually, there's several reasons. One, as previously stated by a member of the school committee, the Ethics Commission is more than capable of handling any of the violations that we have here in Sogas. And secondly, from a very personal point of view, very personal standpoint, since this would be a bylaw violation, virtually any one of you can go down there and swear out a complaint down at the courthouse in Lynn. They would mail that out, they would set a date that the magistrate would hear it, you would have to go down, you may have to go down with legal representation, because in this case, it's a criminal complaint. Now, if you don't think that something like that can affect any individual, you're wrong. We're here because we believe in government, I think we're good people here, but when good people suddenly get something that shows up in the mail that potentially labels you as something that you're not, it really doesn't do too much good for you, and it certainly disturbs the household. Now, as personally, you're saying, well, what does he know about this? Actually, town council can attest to the fact that this happened to me in late September, early October, where a member of this body felt aggrieved by, I'm not even sure what, because the complaint was withdrawn. But for several weeks, there was a certain uneasiness in my household on this. We already have in place, the Ethics Commission has in place the procedures to handle this. I think a referral back to the Board of Selectmen is in order at this time. I certainly support it, and I ask for a roll call vote and referral. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cox?
Congratulations, Mr. Moderator, to the town meeting and the viewers, citizens at home. My opinion on this is very similar to that of Mr. Town Meeting Member Long. I feel that we have a system in place at the state level. That system is reinforced by the fact that all of us have to take a course online that just, basically, it's not a pass/fail, it's just an informative course, but to make sure you know and have been advised of what the laws are. I think by passing something like this, we're taking ourselves out of that network that's in place and has served us well for a while, and putting a very, how can I put it, dangerous tool into the masses. Meaning, if you have a grudge with someone, it's a lot easier to file a complaint with the courts than to go through the lengthy procedure with the state. I feel that we may end up having it abused, and on top of that, it's just in my eyes inflating the volume of words that are on our bylaws as it stands right now. So I really do not support this at all. In fact, I'd go so far as to, instead of referring it back to the Selectmen, I'd like to indefinitely postpone it and make a motion to do so. Thank you.
We currently have a motion actually before us to indefinitely postpone it. What we need to do first is vote on the motion to refer. In the event that it doesn't get referred, then we would take up the motion to indefinitely postpone. But is there any other discussion on the motion to refer at this time?
I'm Brian Costin, town meeting member from Precinct Seven. I'd like to congratulate the moderator on his election. And Mr. Moderator, Madam Clerk, executive board members, town meeting members, ladies and gentlemen, I believe this should be referred back to the makers of the motion bylaw, and as was previously stated, the complexion of the board has changed greatly. What I would like to see, and I have no control over this, but if the Board of Selectmen could set up a committee comprised of one new selectman and one selectman from the previous board, along with two members of town meeting to study this, and I would suggest Mr. Long, who's very busy, the former moderator, would be a great candidate to be on this committee to just study the ramifications and whatnot of a new bylaw such as this. As I said, we have no control over that, but that's just my suggestion to the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on the motion to refer? Yes, Ms. Fiala.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Congratulations, and congratulations to all the town meeting members, Ellen Fiala, Sogas Board of Selectmen. I do ask that you refer this back to us, as has been said several times this evening, the board has changed, and this vote of the Board of Selectmen for the previous board was three to two. Two of the members who voted in favor of putting this on tonight's warrant are no longer serving on the board, so we would hope that you would refer it back to the Board of Selectmen for our review. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Ms. Devlin. Ms. Devlin.
Mr. Moderator, congratulations. I wish you the best of luck. And to the new Town Meeting Members, I wish you the best of luck. Ladies and gentlemen of Town Meeting, I rise this evening to respectfully request you refer Article Four back to the Board of Selectmen. This bylaw is duplicative in nature and destructive to the community as a whole. All elected and appointed officials received a copy from the Saugus Town Clerk of the Conflict of Interest Summary Acknowledgement, and were asked to return to her your signed acknowledgement. We are all required to complete online training pertaining to the Conflict of Interest law. This bylaw, as written and presented to you, would impact any person elected, appointed, serving with or without compensation, volunteering in any capacity, and prevent their participation in a particular matter that they may have a financial interest in. This bylaw would also ask any municipal employee, appointee, or volunteer to look into the future, so to speak, because, as it reads, individuals or business entities that appear before them or that may require from them a permit, license, approval, or recommendation. None of us can predict who may or may not come before the Board. Please think for just a moment about the following events that are organized, supported, and arranged by this community, its municipal employees, its appointees, and its volunteers, and ask yourself if by passing this mean-spirited bylaw, whether your actions will jeopardize these traditions we hold dear and that bring pride to Saugus. Just think for a moment. Founder's Day, the Christmas Stroll, the Meg Foundation Festival of Trees, the Haunted House, the Taste of Education, the S B E C Trivia Night, school councils, Saugus Athletic Leagues, Saugus Youth and Recreation, the Saugus Military Families. Suddenly, the donations of local businesses to worthy causes that you, that choose to support Saugus, and your ability to participate will become restricted by this bylaw. Passage of this bylaw would preclude any activity on your part to participate in such events as so many of our elected, appointed, and volunteers do today. Please do not support this bylaw that will hurt the very people who place their faith and their trust in you on Election Day to do the right thing on their behalf. Please refer this back to the Board of Selectmen and allow the State Ethics Commission to do their job that they do so very well, and allow us to do our job that we are here to do, and not further punish the townspeople by our actions. I would hope that a Town Meeting Member would ask for the roll call vote on this issue, and I thank you for your time and your courtesy.
Thank you. Again, any other discussion on the motion to refer back to the Board of Selectmen? Hearing none. Did we have a request for a roll call vote on this? I know we did on the amendment. Okay, we do have a request, so we will, the clerk will call the roll.
Adabato?
Yes.
Bartolo?
Yes.
Billingsley?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cardinalli?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Ciccolini?
Yes.
Connors?
Yes.
Costin?
Yes.
Cottum?
Yes.
Cottum J?
No.
Cox?
Yes.
Decaro?
Yes.
Devlin?
Yes.
Donardo?
Yes.
Dockery?
Yes.
Pulaski?
Yes.
Finn?
Yes.
Faula?
No.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Grok?
Yes.
Garino?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Lopresti?
Yes.
Maltese?
Yes.
Minugian?
Yes.
McCarthy?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mareschi?
Yes.
Moses?
Yes.
Palzinski?
Yes.
Payalini?
Yes.
Politano?
Yes.
Paracchio? Quinlan?
Yes.
Rando? Ring? Rodenhyza?
Yes.
Rosetti?
Yes.
Smith? Spencer?
Yes.
Stewart? Sweezy?
Yes.
Travers?
No.
Vecchio?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Forty-seven yays, one nay.
Vote is forty-seven yays, one nay. The motion is referred back to the Board of Selectmen. As a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Mr. Maltese moves Article Five to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $174,000 for the purpose of funding salaries and expenditures from the recommendations of the Public Works Department organizational and operational analysis as prepared by the University of Massachusetts Collin Center for Public Management, as proposed by the town manager. And the Finance Committee's recommendation, voted to transfer from the interest on long-term debt budget the amount of $174,000 for the purpose of funding salaries and expenditures from the recommendations of the Public Works Department organizational and operational analysis as prepared by the University of Massachusetts Collin Center for Public Management. Do we have a second? Motion is seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. As a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Mr. Maltese moves Article Six for consideration to see if the town will vote to create a stabilization fund for capital budget purposes under Mass. General Law's Chapter Forty, Section 5B, Chapter Forty-Six, Section Fourteen, and Chapter Fifty, I'm sorry, and Fifty, Chapter One Forty, Section Nineteen, and One Thirty-Seven of the Acts of Two Thousand Three as amended from time to time, as proposed by the town manager. The recommendation of the Finance Committee, they voted to create a stabilization fund for capital budget purposes under Mass. General Law's Chapter Forty, S. Five B, Chapter Forty-Six, S. Fourteen, and Chapter Fifty, Fifty, Chapter One Forty, S. Nineteen, and One Thirty-Seven of the Acts of Two Thousand Three as amended from time to time. Do we have a second on the motion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Article Six passes. As a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Mr. Maltese moves Article Seven for consideration to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $150,000 to be transferred to the stabilization fund for capital budget purposes as proposed by the town manager. Recommendation of the Finance Committee, they voted to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $150,000 to be transferred to the stabilization fund for capital budget purposes. We have a second? Any discussion on Article Seven? Hearing none. We'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Article Seven passes. As a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Mr. Maltese moves Article Eight for consideration to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $265,000 for the purpose of providing a supplemental appropriation to the fiscal year 2014 School Department appropriation. Said funds will be added to Article Two as voted at the 2013 Annual Town Meeting, as proposed by the town manager. Recommendation of the Finance Committee, they voted to raise and appropriate the sum of $265,000 for the purpose of providing a supplemental appropriation to the fiscal year 2014 School Department appropriation. Said funds will be added to Article Two as voted at the 2013 Annual Town Meeting. Do we have a second? We have a second. I also have an amendment that has been submitted in writing on this article. If the tellers could assist me, we have copies here to distribute. Thank you. The motion that the tellers are passing around to you now is to amend Article Eight by adding the following sentence: "The Town Meeting requests that the superintendent and the school committee give strong consideration to applying at least $30,000 of this appropriation to reducing athletic and extracurricular user fees in the most equitable manner possible." And the amendment is submitted by Sean Maltese, Town Meeting Member from Precinct Six. Sean, would you like to speak on the amendment? I'm sorry, we have a second. Thank you, Al. There's that whole learning curve thing back at me again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Congratulations. Fellow Town Meeting Members, this is, you'll see from the handout, it's simply to have a conversation, non-binding, just to start the discussion. And while I'm talking, and you'll see from the handout, a typical, we all know when the Red Sox raise their ticket prices, they tell you what the typical game is going to cost a family of four, and it's exorbitant. And this is what I did with a family of three children, going through seven years of school, three at the Belmonte and four at the high school, each child paying two user fees, along with busing. It's $20,000 for the seven years. During all this, I had a parent come up to me and just $400 to play hockey, you know. It's just, that's all I want to do is start the conversation with us as elected officials and talking about lowering these user fees. Every year at the annual, you hear a fellow Town Meeting Member from Precinct Four come up and discuss the vogue, the cost is rising, the cost is rising. Another Town Meeting Member is always asked, why, why the Saugus numbers are so high? Why is Saugus, why we got more students than last year? Why, they don't pay any user fees. They could bust their front door for free. Their parents save $20,000 to go there. Well, less because of going to the Belmonte. That's all it is, and you can see, these are just rough figures I grabbed from the website. This is the same family that's going to pay $20,000 that we all said, we heard during the election, who supported, not one candidate didn't support a new high school. But is that board going to ask this family that just paid $20,000 in fees to raise their taxes for a new school after you've paid fees? We need to show these people something. If we're going to get a new high school in the future, they're going to end up paying for that as well, and we need to give them something, not just the new building and more money to pay. And that's all it is. It's non-binding, just like some ballot questions, just to start the conversation. It doesn't handcuff the school committee, it doesn't handcuff the new superintendent, it just gets them talking about lowering these user fees. And we should continue this conversation as all of us go forward in the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maltese. Any further discussion on the amendment? Mr. Donato.
Congratulations, Mr. Moderator, and congratulations on your salary of $1 a year. Mr. Moderator, fellow Town Meeting Members, I rise in support of this amendment. I want to remind this body, when we vote the school budget, if it's thirty-something million dollars, once we vote that budget, they could spend it on whatever they want. They could put it all to salaries, they could spend it all on books. We lose any control over that. So actually, this is a message to the school department. I hope they heed to our thoughts if this passes, and I think it's a great idea, and just remind them that they're going to have to come before us on other issues. So I just hope that they will look at this and that hopefully this amendment would be possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment? Okay, hearing none. At this time, we'll call the question, and again, the question right now before us is to amend Article Eight, the amendment that Mr. Maltese provided, which is to amend Article Eight by adding the following sentence: "The Town Meeting requests that the superintendent and the school committee give strong consideration to applying at least $30,000 of this appropriation to reducing athletic and extracurricular user fees in the most equitable manner possible." With that, we'll call the question. All in favor of the amendment to Article Eight? Signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, the majority of ayes on Article Eight, the amendment passes. Now to the article itself, Article Eight as amended. Any discussion? If not, we'll call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? The motion has passed as amended. Mr. Maltese, as a courtesy to the Finance Committee, moves Article Nine for consideration to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $12,000 for the purpose of providing a supplemental appropriation to the fiscal year 2014 Town Manager Expense Appropriation to fund the Medicaid reimbursement administrative expense. Said funds will be added to Article Two as voted at the 2013 Annual Town Meeting, submitted by the town manager. Recommendation of the Finance Committee, they voted to raise and appropriate the sum of $12,000 for the purpose of providing a supplemental appropriation to the fiscal year 2014 Town Manager Expense Appropriation to fund the medical reimbursement administrative expense. Said funds will be added to Article Two as voted at the 2013 Annual Town Meeting. Do we have a second? Moved and seconded. Any discussion on Article Nine? Hearing none. We'll call the question. All in favor of passage of Article Nine, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Article passes. Article Ten. As a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Mr. Maltese moves Article Ten for consideration to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $8,600 to fund unpaid bills of a prior fiscal year, as submitted by the town manager. And the recommendation of the Finance Committee voted to raise and appropriate the sum of $8,600 to fund unpaid bills of a prior fiscal year. You have a slightly different wording in front of you, I believe it's, no, wait a minute, that's the next one, Article Eleven, never mind, cancel that. This vote does require a, because we're funding something from a prior fiscal year that's closed out, it is going to require a nine-tenths majority to pass this, okay? Is there any discussion on Article Ten? Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Congratulations, by the way. Do we know what these unpaid bills are? Can we know what you need the money for? Thank you.
Good evening. Congratulations, Mr. Moderator, and congratulations to the new Town Meeting Members. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a, what ends up happening is we do a closeout of the year end, and I think something that a lot of people don't realize is that after July 1st or July 15th, where the accounting office and the administration works all the way through till continuing even this week at providing and putting together documents that are for the DOR to be able to set our tax rate and do our year end with the accounting office. So that's, there's a lot of things that go on over the summer. But in any event, these bills here are things that, and commerces that people come upon after the close, and the legal proper way to handle encumbrances and things that, from a prior year, is that you need a nine-tenths vote, and it needs to come in front of Town Meeting, and it's probably, we did some last year, we have more, some this year from this fiscal year, and you would, I guess can expect that we would do this moving each year to handle it in a legal and proper manner. The bills are made up of things that weren't submitted in a timely, in time for us to be able to have them paid within the fiscal year before the close, and a lot of them are made up of industrial supplies, and quite a few of them are from the state police with details that were done through the projects that were billed and weren't, there was some confusion on who was supposed to pay them, but ended up being that the DPW in the town was responsible for those. There's also some bills that had to do with some new hires for some of the exams that they go through that come in after the, after the fiscal year. they go through that come in after the, after the fiscal year, as well as some MEMA funding that we had received and a prior administration had signed off on that we actually never were entitled to, so we have to refund those funds back to the state, as well as a $258 worth of some school bills that, that were left over from the previous year that, that were discovered. So that's a makeup of what the 8,600 and change comes to. Hope that helps.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the town manager? Any other discussion on Article X? Hearing none. We'll call for the question. All in favor of passing Article X? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article X passes. As a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Mr. Maltese moves Article 11 for consideration to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $27,615 from overlay surplus for the purpose of funding the overlay deficit in fiscal year 2005 overlay account. This amount has been approved by the town of Saugus Board of Assessors in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 25, submitted by the town manager. There is a typo, as I understand in this, which will be explained, but it's, that's actually a fiscal year 2009 overlay account, that should say, as opposed to 2005. And the recommendation of the Finance Committee, they voted to raise and appropriate the sum of $27,615 from overlay surplus for the purpose of funding the overlay deficit in fiscal year 2009 overlay account. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We'll call the question. All in favor of passage of Article 11? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
You know what? Let me back up. Remember that learning curve I talked about? Do we have a second on Article 11? Second, thank you. All in favor of passing it as, as proposed and seconded? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article 11 passes. As a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Mr. Maltese moves Article 12 for consideration to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money for capital improvements to the sound town's sanitary sewer system, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, to determine whether this appropriation shall be raised by borrowing from the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust or otherwise, and to take any other action relative thereto, town manager. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to appropriate by borrowing the sum of $2,996,000 for capital improvements to the town's sanitary sewer system, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion on Article 12? Hearing none. We'll call for the question. All in favor of passage of Article 12? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article 12 has passed. One second. As a courtesy to the town manager, Mr. Maltese moves for consideration of Article 13. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaws by adding a new Article 17 entitled Historic Mills Mixed Use Overlay District that would provide as follows. I would amend the zoning bylaw text by adding the following Article 17. amend the zoning map by adding an overlay map entitled Saugus Mill Mixed Use Overlay 122712, prepared by the MAPC to designate the boundary of the Historic Mills Overlay District. And then the proposed text and mapper is follows, but I understand, go ahead, Mr. Rosetti.
We've got to move that we waive reading of the article.
Thank you. Mr. Rosetti has moved that we waive reading of the article. Do we have a second?
Aye.
Okay. All in favor of waiving the reading of the article? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Appreciate that. Mr. Town Manager, would you like to speak on this?
The, on this article here, this has been, has, submitted to the planning board. The planning board has to make a recommendation to town meeting. I assume that that'll happen at some future meeting and would, I guess, recommend to have that article referred back to the planning board for their recommendation.
We have a motion to refer this back. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rosetti?
Mr. Moderator, this particular article was, voted to be inserted in a town meeting warrant on a Tuesday at a Board of Selectmen's meeting. It was given to the Planning Board Clerk on Wednesday. What it would have meant was advertising this, because we have a certain requirement to get this advertised. The advertisement has to be 14 days, but because of the way it would have to be advertised, it would have to be advertised on Saturday, and the 14-day time period to have the meeting meant that the meeting would have been scheduled for tomorrow night. Needless to say, the timeframe didn't work. Planning Board did not meet on this. They do not have a recommendation at this point in time. However, we will have a recommendation before the next town meeting. So it was just a question of timing. Unfortunately, advertising on a Saturday is not a good idea, and having the meeting after the town meeting wouldn't allow us to have the recommendation.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I have a question to the chairman of the planning board. If town meeting votes to refer it back to the planning board, is it your intention to have a hearing on an article after this town meeting adjourns? Or would you be waiting for the selectmen to insert it in a subsequent town meeting?
Mr. Moderator, I guess I'm the only one that didn't congratulate you. Sorry. Congratulations. The issue with referring it, having the hearing before the next town meeting is, I believe, and I'm talking off the top of my head under the statute, it's only good for six months. So there would be an issue as to when the next town meeting is. What I've suggested to the town manager is it be reinserted in the next, whatever the next town meeting is, especially annual, and as a result of that, the planning board may conduct the hearing. If they have the hearing before that time, they run the risk of that six-month, not being within the six-month period.
So, Mr. Moderator, if I may, to, through you, to the town manager, is it your expectation that there'd be a town meeting within the next six months? I would imagine the annual, or would it be the annual?
As most of you are probably aware, they, we are annually looked at from a bond rating standpoint, from the Moody's and the other bond rating agencies, and that's done, I believe, sometime around March or April. So it would be the intent, at least my intent, to request from the selectmen to call for another special, probably sometime in January or February, with the intent that hopefully we would see some free cash available to be able to make a recommendation to put additional monies into stabilization prior to us receiving a bond rating, because that is one of the things that the bond rating agencies look at, is your free cash percentage based on your operating budget, as well as what we have in stabilization. So the intent would be to try to move without having a crystal ball, but to have, ask the selectmen to call for a special sometime prior to that evaluation, if that helps.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Moderator, it seems to me that based on the information we heard from the town council and the town manager, that the only, the correct motion that this town meeting should offer is to refer this to the Board of Selectmen for insertion into a subsequent town meeting so that procedurally, that it can come before us and that we can act at the, at the next meeting. So I would move that it be referred to the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Ros, Mr. Rosetti? Do we have a second on Mr. Menugian's motion to refer?
Mr. Moderator, just caution that if it is referred to the Board of Selectmen, I believe they understand that there's a certain timeframe for advertising, so as long as it's given to us in proper time, that shouldn't be an issue. But if it's on a short basis, unfortunately, advertising in one newspaper versus another can be very expensive. So we just need a certain amount of time to advertise.
Ms. Menugian.
The words of caution from the previous member are greatly appreciated. However, procedurally, it's the only way that the article can come before us. If it goes to the planning board and they act without a vehicle, without a warrant article, they're going to have to have another hearing again anyways, based on what I heard from the town council. And I've, I've heard the Board of Selectmen talk much about the importance of communication, and I trust that they will have that type of dialogue with the chairman of the planning board and the town manager, so that the advertising, the hearing, and it coming before us can be done in a procedurally acceptable way. I want to point something out to the town meeting. This article has been the work of our former colleague, and I miss her greatly, Bill, I love you, but your wife Janet, we miss her, I wish she was here this evening, I hope she's watching and is doing well. But the, the people that worked on this, and town meeting members from Precinct 1 and Precinct 7 that participated in this, as well as the Massachusetts Area Planning Council that gave us a grant, who we hope we will get additional grants from, I think just recently, they, Cynthia Wall asked where this was in the process. I'd like to see a decision made on this as soon as practicable, but in a timely and appropriate fashion, so that this, this can be acted upon in a, in a, in a proper way. So I hope that the, the motion has been seconded and that you would accept referring it back to the selectmen. Thank you.
At this time, we have two motions actually between, before us, so I'm asking, I'd refer to Mr. Suizy. Would, given the discussion, would you be prepared to withdraw your motion to commit it, to refer it back to the planning board? So with that, we have one motion before us, which is to refer it to the Board of Selectmen to be inserted in the next town meeting warrant. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That is actually the last piece of business that we have between us, before us this evening. I would like to add my congratulations to the newly-elected town meeting members. It's, it's good to have you on board, it's nice to see new faces, and I look forward to working with you. Also, to our newly-elected Board of Selectmen, our new members and our returning ones, congratulations, and again, we look forward to working with you. As a courtesy, town manager, Mr. Crap, do you have anything you'd like to address the crowd with? No? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So adjourned.
Muran? So adjourned? Seconded? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Okay. One second.
First of all.
Thank you very much.
Jeannie Bartolo, town meeting member, Precinct 6. I think I'd like to, all of us, take a moment. Bill Lucy, our beloved Janet isn't here tonight, Janet Lucy, and her husband Bill is here to sit in. I'd like all of us to stand up and have a moment of silence and say one Hail Mary for her, so she knows that we're all thinking of her. Thank you.
If you could just stand and join me in a moment of silence in, in recognition of our, our town meeting member Janet Lucy, who recently resigned from the position due to health reasons. We have, Mr. Menugian?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
We are closing the business of the town meeting by first nominating Mr. Brian Carston as the fifth member of the Audit Committee.
We have a nomination and second for the fifth member of our Audit Committee, Mr. Brian Carston. Is there any, any further nominations for the fifth spot? We have a motion that nominations be closed. Is that seconded?
So adjourned.
All right. All in favor of adding the fifth name to our Audit Committee and closing that out? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, we have our Audit Committee. Once again, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved? Seconded? We are adjourned. Folks, have a good evening. Drive safely.